Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh dan selamat siang. Good afternoon, everyone. Hope everyone is keeping well. For those of you who are fasting, happy fasting. Hope that you can concentrate throughout the event because this is a very important meeting, right? A town hall meeting attended not only by local youth from west Nusa Tenggara, but also from all throughout central Indonesia. And we are also very happy and graced with the presence by some of our partners from the embassies, as well as our actual delegates who are making their trip all the way from other continents. So thank you so much for making your time joining us this afternoon. And I hope that we can have a fruitful discussion. And this is the town hall meeting as part of the Y20 Indonesia 2022 pre-summit event on digital transformation. Before we begin the event, I would like to remind all of you why we are all here and why this meeting is super important. First of all, digital transformation is relevant to all of us, to all of the youngsters. When we talked about digital transformation, all of us will be affected. But unfortunately, a lot of us are not be able to be involved that much. And therefore, there needs to be a policy discussion, more policy discussion to ensure that the youngsters who are the digital native, were driving the forces and changes to be able to be involved more in the discussion that would shape the direction of the policies. Digital transformation has also transformed policy discussion from a monologue into a dialogue. Usually, foreign policy are broadcasted as news highlights from the Minister of Foreign Affairs or high-level officials. But right now, through social medias and other platforms or discussion like this, all of us, each one of us, are able to take part and shape that direction of the foreign policy. So therefore, we need everyone to be involved and we need every voice because everyone matters. Everything that you think about, it matters. Doesn't matter where you come from. We really want to hear from what you think about and how we can reach out to more youth. So we can ensure that Y20 is not only for a certain group of people, but Y20 belongs to all the young people. So with that, I would like to begin just to give you a little bit of run-through and because I'm not that young anymore. I'm just gonna sit for a while. So there will be a sequence of events that you can expect experiencing this afternoon. So first of all, we would deliver a white paper presentation. So the team of the Y20 OC has prepared for almost a year a white paper that can guide delegates throughout their discussion. So we'll give you a brief overview of that white paper. And then our delegate Marcel Satria will come and present some of the major highlights of digital transformation. And that would kick off our discussion. And then we'll have three speakers responding to that presentation. And then right afterwards, we'll have everyone taken into a breakout rooms, not in the breakout rooms Zoom meeting, but here. And then all of you would discuss. And then the representatives of each of the groups would come and tell us what you think about the issues that we've presented in both the white paper as well as Marcel's presentation later on. Now, without further ado, let's look at the presentation of the white paper, please. Yes, we can go to the next slide. Yeah, so in this digital transformation issue, we talked about two sub-priorities. Number one, the youth roles in digital governance. And then secondly, on digital financial awareness. And we've hosted a survey, an online survey with over 5,000 respondents from all the G20 members, including 19 countries and the European Union. And it's partitioned with gender balance as well as rural, urban divide as well. So we're trying to make sure that the survey could represent well the demography that we have, the diversity of the demography that we have across G20 members. And these are some of the interesting findings. Apparently, more than 61% of young people across G20 countries have issues with internet connectivity. That might mean that some of these people don't have internet connection at all, but some of them do have internet connection, but still have unreliable service, unaffordable data package. Sometimes, it's not as smooth as it is in perhaps big cities or big offices. So 61%, more than half of young people do have issues with internet connectivity. But it's not only a sad and gloom story because apparently, there is a lot of opportunities presented by digital transformation. Because between 2011 to 2014 alone, 700 million people from developing countries are helped to find their ways out of extreme poverty. So through digital payments and digital transactions, we could help a lot of poor families go out of extreme poverty, have more direct access to digital finances. And when it comes to digital transformation, there is always an issue of digital talents. Who would be the driver? And who would be the ones to create that digital innovation? And apparently, there is always a gap between supply and demand, the demand in the industry and the supply from the educational sector, right? And according to G20 youth, the top three talents that are now needed mostly are software developers or software development, security and data. So those are like the top three skills that are mostly in need, but we are mostly are also lacking in terms of mismatch of supply and demand. Next slide, please. Alright, so let's break it down very briefly because we have a lot to cover. So in the first part, youth roles in digital governance, we've seen that there is an issue with connectivity. Over 369 million young people remains offline. So imagine all the missing opportunities that they get to experience because they don't have internet connection. So if you look at the challenges side, there are three parts discussed in the white paper. Firstly, there is this widening digital divide, an absence of connectivity. And when we talk about infrastructure, it's not only about internet connection, but it's also about all this other stuff that comes with internet connectivity. That includes logistical support, warehousing, all the other parts, even electricity, to ensure that digital economy can thrive and be enjoyed by all. There's also a lack of digital literacy and skills. There is this mismatch between supply and demand, as I've already mentioned. And lastly, but it's also quite frightening is that as we are transforming digitally, there will be more data collected. And some of them would be personally identifiable data, sensitive data of your personal information. So ensuring that the security and privacy of these data are well-respected and that countries have agreement or cross-border shared practices to respect this privacy and data security would also be a key challenge. But of course, it's not always, again, sad stories. Digital transformation also offers huge opportunities. It opens up job opportunities for more than 55.3 million people worldwide in 2020 alone. So when you have that challenges, but also opportunities, we need to ensure that the digital divide could be narrowed and the digital dividend could be enjoyed by all. So in terms of opportunities, we want to see more youth engagement on digital activism, to broaden knowledge exchange, build movement, tackle misinformation. We would also want inclusive decision-making. So when a decision is made by policymakers, they consider data from the ground and being able to analyze it and also put human at the center of the decision-making process. So having a data-centered and human-centered decision-making process would be a key opportunity that we can enable through digital transformation. And lastly, post-pandemic situation, we need to build back better. And a lot of these problem-solving innovations are coming from health tech, edu tech. They are also made, a lot of them are made by youth. And we want to enable more of that to ensure a stronger recovery. Next slide, please. And I'm trying to see whether I'm still boring you with more of this. Now, digital financial awareness. So it's not only about connectivity, literacy and digital talent, but we want to ensure that once people get connected, they can use it for a valuable means. Unfortunately, some of the findings that we have is that only 3% of online activities have commercial values. And this is something huge, right? Because especially in Indonesian case, people spend on average six to nine hours a day online. And the younger you get, the more hours you actually spend online. And only 3% of these activities have commercial values. And the rest probably are not so much a good use of your time. But we also see if you are enabling the youngsters to have access to digital payment, this would open up the commercial values of your online activities. And that's exactly why we want to talk about financial awareness and specifically on digital financial awareness. And apparently, over 59% of the financially excluded population do not even know about digital financial services. They are not aware of it. They don't know the benefits of it. That's why before we talked about all this high-level discussion on CBDC, Central Bank, digital currency or crypto assets or cryptocurrency, we need to ensure that people know that it exists and they know how to make use of it. That's why we want to talk about digital financial awareness. In terms of challenges and opportunities, very quickly, supply and demand risk factors. Apparently, there are all the different barriers that prohibits young people involvement in digital financial services update. There's also a lack of financial literacy. And the rise of digital currency and crypto assets and cryptocurrency, a lot of people don't, probably, they're not prepared to shift from payments as usual that we are always doing, business as usual that we are always doing to like these new means of investment, for example, in payment in other countries' case. Now, when it comes to opportunities, we also want to ensure that payment and digital financial accesses can be translated from just the convenience of making that transaction from your dining table, for example, into efforts that can alleviate poverty, help alleviate poverty or achieve sustainable development goals. There are a lot of examples, just what I mentioned earlier. In Kenya, over 700 million people are putting out of extreme poverty because of access to digital finance. So we want to see more of those. We want to see how digital financial awareness and services are translated into something meaningful. And then we also want to see women empowerment. In Indonesia's case, we have very good examples where over 50% of merchants' owners are female. And we want to ensure that women are given a certain level of intervention where they can also have equal access to these facilities. And lastly, we also want to ensure that the use cases are deepened. We want to harness emerging technology when it comes to digital financial services. And that also includes, for example, collecting tax more efficiently or distributing social benefits for poorer households more efficiently. We've seen in the COVID-19 cases, there are a lot of mismatched data between the recipients and those who are actually receiving social benefits, for example. But if you have access to digital means of making that payment more efficiently, we can see a lot of great changes. And it's not only those that are accessed by the youth in the cities, but we wanted to make sure that these can reach out to the last mile and to everyone, to every youth, wherever they are. Okay? So I hope that sets the tone for our discussion. So youth roles in digital governance, this is a broad issue. And then digital financial awareness, also a broad issue. But regardless, digital transformation affects all of us. And we do not want the decision and policies of digital transformation are left on the hands of those who do not understand how to create a policy that could benefit all young people. So we need to unite our voices through this platform and influence this policy because we are the one who would inherit the repercussion of the policy that they are being formed during this time. So with that, I don't know if I've introduced myself. Maybe I haven't. Anyway, yeah, so my name is Beyond the Sima. I was one of the delegates in 2015. And then now I'm the track chair and lead researcher for digital transformation. And what's even more important is that we want to hear from our delegate this year. So Marcel Satria would present some of the issues, not only from the G20 countries, but looking into and zooming into the Indonesia's context and just for our partners from the embassies and delegates. So the setup of this meeting is pretty much directed for our local youth. We want to ensure that G20 becomes more inclusive. We wanted to hear from more local knowledge and perspectives where the issues are actually closer to them. So that's why we designed this before we actually opened the pre-summit event this afternoon. And to bring us closer to home, let's have Marcel to deliver his presentation. Over to you, Marcel.
Test. Good afternoon. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Om swasti astu nama budaya. Salam kebajikan bagi kita semua. Good afternoon, everyone. And I'm so excited to be here. I'm excited to hear from you, NTB Youth, Central Indonesia. You guys are very important to me because guess what? I have the privilege and honor of representing you in the Y20 summit. And so it's very important for me to listen to your inputs about the digital transformation issues in general. Today, I want to talk a little bit more about Indonesia. As Beyond the presented, he was giving a white paper on the Y20 and what the issues are that all delegates for all Y20 will be discussing. But I want to be talking a little bit more about the Indonesia context. So if we can pull up the slides. I should introduce myself before that. My name is Marcel Satria. What I do on my day job is I actually work in Dana Indonesia. I'm sure many of you have heard of it. It's an e-wallet fintech payment platform. And I lead corporate development and investor engagement for Dana Indonesia. Before that, I worked at Goldman Sachs where I advised a lot of technology startups throughout the region, including Gojek, Tokopedia and a lot of other startups in helping them with mergers, acquisitions, fundraisings, et cetera. So let's move on to the next slide. Let's get right into what the digital economy potential is in Indonesia. Indonesia has one of the largest digital economies in Southeast Asia. It's contributing over 40% of the total. And it's expected to contribute as much as that going forward as well. If you look at 2021, according to Google, Tomasek and Bain, the digital economy size is as big as $70 billion. And even that could be an underestimate. And it's expected to grow almost to double by 2025 to $146 billion. So we have a big potential in the world and in Southeast Asia. Let's zoom in into the GDP or PDB in Indonesian in Indonesia. We see in 2020, the Ministry of SOZ predicted that or estimated that the digital economy contributed about 4.1% of GDP. And it's expected to grow to around 18.9% of GDP by 2030. That's almost 20% of our entire GDP. And as you can see, the growth is eight times, surpassing the growth of the entire Indonesia economy, which is 1.5 times. So as you can see, digital economy is extremely important and will be an important contributor to our economy in general in Indonesia going forward. So the digital economy is an important sector that needs to be developed by youth and for youth. And why is that? If we go to the next page. We see that 65% of the Indonesian population are millennials or younger. That's incredible. We have one of the youngest populations in the world. And in fact, Gen Z is the largest age demographic in Indonesia with 28% of our population, according to the 2020 census. On average, Gen Z spend around 9.7 hours a day online, which is a lot for 16 to 25 years old. That's on the demand side. We have a lot of potential as consumers of the digital economy. What about the supply side? If we look at our digital skills in Indonesia's labor force, according to a Smeru Research Institute paper, they said that less than 1% of Indonesian workers have advanced digital skills. That's extremely low, especially when we're thinking about the potential contribution that digital economy will have into the Indonesia's GDP. We need to be fixing that supply side as well. So notwithstanding its large potential, Indonesia's digital economy is still mainly consumptive and it's not as productive as we're hoping. If we go to the next slide. The benefits of digital transformation. And I don't need to go too deep into this because I'm sure you all, as youth, know that digital transformation has so many benefits. But let's focus on digital payments, which is something that I'm familiar with and is something that I often work with. If we look at transaction volumes between debit cards, credit cards and digital payments, we see that by 2020, digital payments has already overtaken in terms of transaction volume, both credit cards and debit cards. That is amazing. And if you see, the numbers are not taking from each other, like it's not a zero-sum game. What we're seeing here is financial inclusion at action, right? It's not about the pie being shared differently. It's about the pie being bigger because digital payments is a way for more Indonesians to be included in the financial economy of Indonesia. So digital payments clearly has had a great impact on Indonesians. If we look on transaction value, of course, debit cards still dominate in terms of value. But we see that digital payments is still growing incredibly fast. And we're expecting that to grow even more going forward. When we talk about the other sectors of the digital economy too, the digitalization of commerce, SMEs through e-commerce platforms like Shopee, Tokopedia, Lazada, so many others, and two-wheel transportation services or Ojek online by Gojek and Grab, we know that that has helped formalize the economy, which was previously unrecorded and which we did not know. So the digitalization of these sectors have been really, really beneficial. And of course, in the COVID-19 pandemic, digital tools were so essential for us to be able to even handle that pandemic. So if we go to the next slide, I want to focus more about, so what is the role of policymakers? If we're thinking about us right now as you're thinking about what policy proposal we should be giving to the Y20 or to our leaders, what's the role of policymakers? The first thing I would say is we're very fortunate in Indonesia to have so many good startups and entrepreneurships. And I believe that innovation is not necessarily a policymaker's duty, but it is the entrepreneurship's passion. So what does the policymaker have to do? The policymaker needs to create an ecosystem. It develops and fosters an ecosystem that is conducive towards such entrepreneurship. How do they do that? They empower the players and build capacity of the players in the digital economy. They provide infrastructure needs, both physical and regulatory. And of course, they foster an environment full of trust, safety and regulatory certainty. And the needs listed above are more urgent, especially because we're all conscious that digital is the new thing. It's the next thing that we want to do. But before we go full speed ahead, we need to really take a look and see, do we have that environment in Indonesia? The question of whether digital tools are good or bad, in my opinion, is a false dichotomy. Digital technologies are only tools. So let's take an example with the car. When the car was first invented, it's an innovation, right? There were a lot of accidents that happened and people were scared. Oh, is a car good or bad? It's the same way that people think about digital technologies today. Is it good or bad? Well, it's neither. It's a tool, right? But how did policymakers innovate? Well, they came up with innovations like a seatbelt. They came up with innovations like zebra crossings. Yeah? And they came up with innovations like driver's licenses. What's that? That's exactly what policymakers' duties are in the face of innovation. They need to be innovating the regulations to ensure safety. They need to build the environment to make sure that that car can be at its full potential, for example, without crashing pedestrians. But at the same time, you build the capacity of the people who are driving the cars, right? Making sure that they're actually qualified and they can drive a car. This is the same concept that we can apply to digital transformation, right? It's not about is digital transformation good or bad. It's about how can we think about policies that can build the right environment for digital economy to thrive because we know that its benefits are fantastic. And of course, enforcement. If we go to the next slide. What are the challenges of Indonesian youth today? Based on the survey results that we saw, that we sent out to everyone in the Y20 followers, we see that three key issues arise. The first is digital divide and connectivity issues. This is physical infrastructure issues. We still don't have the best connectivity and we know that, right? You must experience it too over here. Trust, cybersecurity and data privacy. This is what I call regulatory infrastructure. We don't have sufficient good regulatory infrastructure for this new world. And we need to, right? We need to have that safety in order for that economy to thrive. And then finally, digital literacy and meaningful labor participation in the digital economy. And this is capacity building. This is focusing on people. This is focusing on human-centered participation in the digital economy. And these are the key challenges for youth. Why? Because you, we, as youth, all of us, will be the biggest participants and builders of this new digital economy, which, as I've mentioned before, is such a big potential in Indonesia. Next. I'm going to quickly go through these, but I'm sure you understand. Digital divide exists. The richest have the best connectivity in Indonesia. And if we look even on a geographical perspective, we can see what the Ministry of Communication and Information tracks in terms of daerah tinggal or the outermost areas and how well-covered they are and whether or not they're doing something about it. The red areas are things that are completely unserved. They haven't even started in helping serve those areas. The blue areas are unserved areas, but they're not daerah tinggal. They're pretty well-connected areas. So we see still a lot of red and blue areas in general. And that's something that's of concern. And if we look at, for example, the target internet users according to our medium-term national plan by BAPANAS, they expected 82% to be internet users. I'm sorry it's covered by this. But according to the Surfe Socioeconomia Nacional, in 2020, we only have 54% of internet users. 54% of the population has internet users. We go to the next slide. Here, we see the difference between mobile and fixed broadband. Why is this important? Most of you access the internet through mobile. But mobile is much lower throughput, lower Mbps. And also, not only that, it's not as stable and more expensive. You need to buy data plans, right? To access the internet. But fixed broadband is important because if you want to do productive things in the digital economy, like education, streaming, you need fixed broadband. And so if our government is saying, oh, our internet connection is And so if the, if our government is saying, oh, our internet connection is already good because people have access through mobile, that's not good enough. We need to have fixed broadband too, because we, as I've mentioned before, we need to have a more productive digital economy. So connectivity is still primarily mobile first, broadband is low, there's inequality of data and internet prices, which worsens inequality overall, because the most unserved areas are the most expensive places for data. But technology is supposed to be the biggest equalizer, right? Technology is supposed to give anyone in Indonesia the same chance to develop, to learn, to do anything. And so this is not good enough. That, this is why we want to focus this for our policies. We want to, it needs to be prioritized, especially if we want to build that digital economy going forward. Next. And I'll have to rush through these unfortunately, because they've told me I've got times up. But trust, cybersecurity, and data privacy. We see a lot of online fraud. That's so concerning, and we've heard of all this online fraud. That breaks the trust people have in digital financial adoption. So we need greater enforcement of regulations that are more proactive. A lot of our regulators say, oh, that's, that's illegal. Yeah, we know it's illegal, but it's your job to also ensure that the people are protected, and that's something that we care about, because we want trust in this digital economy. Cybersecurity. We see a lot of cases of data loopholes. Weak cybersecurity is almost as if like you have an open filing cabinet. If you have like an open filing cabinet and you can just walk in into a government office and take your data, that's really concerning. You wouldn't want that, right? So we need to make sure that the infrastructure is also fixed in our cybersecurity, because the digital world is not just another world. The digital world is the real world too, right? It's part of what we do every day, and we need to fix those weaknesses. Next. Data is the new oil, the new blood, the new gold of the digital economy, and it has effects too if we don't protect the data privacy of, of our citizens. We see that it has impacted disinformation campaigns in other economy, in other democracies, and we need to safeguard our democracy as well. And we see that it's important that citizens have full understanding of their rights, of their data, so that they're not just mined by big companies. Next. And of course, as I've mentioned before, digital literacy and skills. We still have low literacy skills in general. The distribution of IT graduates in Indonesia is extremely unequal, and of course, as I've mentioned before, the digital skills of Indonesia's labor force is still low. So what, what does that mean? That means the government needs to do more, and we need to have more programs to ensure that all youth have the opportunity to learn digital skills, right, and literacy. Why? Because the target proportion of workers with intermediate to advanced skills, according to RPGMN, which is the Medium Term National Development Plan, is around fifty percent of workers. But in 2020, we have fourteen percent who have intermediate or advanced digital skills. And the Ministry of State-owned Enterprises also forecasted that the digital labor force needed in 2030 for that very big GDP contribution is seventeen million workers, and we're still far from that. Next. So just a summary, Indonesia's digital economy has a large potential, right? The development of that digital economy needs to be geared towards more productive-based, rather than a consumptive-based economy. Digital transformation, as you all know, has revolutionized the way we do economic activities, and it has so many great benefits that I'm sure you all know. But at the same time, policymakers have a role as ecosystem developers. We need to foster the right environment for optimal development of that digital economy. And what are the key challenges for Indonesia? I think digital divide and connectivity, which is physical infrastructure, trust, cybersecurity, and data privacy, which is digital governance or regulatory infrastructure, and then finally, digital literacy and meaningful labor participation in the digital economy, capacity building. We need to be working on all those things. Thank you. I think that's it. And just very quickly. Very quickly, I'd present the working groups in the digital transformation track of this year in Y20, between the discussion that we've had across the different countries. These are the key issues that we're focusing on. We are focusing on access, connectivity, and infrastructure, digital literacy and skills, digital government and digital identification, data privacy, cybersecurity, digital well-being, misinformation, digital finance, payments, and financial literacy, and finally, crypto assets and central bank digital currencies. Thank you once again. Looking forward to hearing all your voices.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Marcel. And thank you for all of you for, for staying with us. You're very grateful that you are, like, I can see the, all the faces from here, and you guys are very attentive, and I'm sure that you are eager to participate and contribute with your own, you know, ideas, because what matters now is that we would want to hear from what you think about these issues, right? But you know what else you are thankful about? We are also thankful of our partners who are supporting this event without, who supports this event would definitely not be able to manifest as the way it is now. So we'd like to give a shout-out to some of our partners and sponsors from Pluwang, Gotu, BCA, Tanata Foundation, LGN, Peta Aman, Mineral Nurutengara. Now, after you hear the presentation delivered by Marcel, let's hear from those who've been doing this in their job, right? The practitioners, the, the people who've been looking at digital transformation in day-to-day job, and what kind of challenges that they see, and what kind of future would they foresee, and how youth can be involved to ensure that this future could, you know, come into realization. So with that, I would like to invite three speakers. Number one, Ahmad, Pak Ahmad Junaidi, who would be joining us online. Hello, Pak. Apa kabar? Yeah, you can give a round of applause.
Fine, thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much for having me, Marcel.
Thank you so much. So Pak Ahmad Junaidi is an educator, volunteer, and writer. He's interested in the issue of globalization, critical education, and environment, and Pak Ahmad is also Lombok born and raised. So thank you so much for joining us, Pak, this afternoon. And joining us offline, we have Pak Lalu Lianhari Wangi. Pak Lalu is a data analyst and engineering manager of Silacak. In the last seven years, he has been involved in a program to strengthen health information systems in Indonesia in collaboration with the Ministry of Health, WHO, USAID, Global Funds, and others. This is pretty much relevant with our post-pandemic situation. Please welcome me to, join me to welcome Pak Lalu to join me on stage, please, if you're here, yeah.
How are you? Yeah. All right. So it's not Pak, it's rather Mas, yeah. Yeah, thank you so much for joining us, Mas Lalu. And then, last but not least, we have Pak Tonggam El Tobi. He is a doctor of business management, currently serving as the chairman of the Investment Alert Task Force. This task force is a coordination forum for twelve ministries and institutions for the prevention and handling of illegal investment. Please join me, join me in welcoming Pak Tonggam to the stage.
How are you? Yes, yes. Okay, so Pak Ahmad Lalu, and I feel like it's quite misplaced if I call you Mas Lalu, but, yeah, so, and, and then Pak Tonggam, very happy that you're joining us in this panel, but most likely what we want to hear from you is that you respond to the presentation delivered by our delegates. So there are a lot of opportunities. We also want digital transformation to be more productive, rather than just consumptive. And then there are a lot of risks as well, be it from infrastructure, literacy, data security. Keen to hear from your experience. What, what do you think? What's your general thoughts on those? And how do you think youth can be involved further? Maybe we'll start from Pak Ahmad, and then we'll, we'll hear from Lalu, and then we'll hear from Pak Tonggam. Please, Pak Ahmad, you may have the floor.
Thank you very much for having me, the organizing committee. It's a great honor for me to be here with you guys. As our moderator has said, I was born and raised in Lombok, and I'm an educator. I'm doing my PhD now in education at Monash University, proudly saying that it is one of the best educational faculty in the world. And I will be speaking on my capacity as the educator who has been doing a lot of activities in Lombok in, in terms of its literacy, and I would like to relate that to the challenge that we have now in the digital transformation process that we have in Indonesia. Of first, I would like to say that we should not be pessimistic about the future, but we shouldn't also be overly optimistic, that we become so naive about all the risks that it possesses. I would like to say that we should be realistic in a way that we see the evidence, and then that's the way to move forward. In the presentation by Satrya, I was amazed by all the data, and I, and he mentioned about all the economic benefit that has been done in Kenya. I know the, the program was called MPEZA, and it has succeeded in alleviating the poverty up to two percent, and that's a great, great achievement of a digital transformation, and we know all these great, great things about technology. Yeah, and, and internet has become a human right, and United Nations has said that. But what it means is, when it becomes a human right, it's not only about the access, but people should have access to the freedom of speech through the internet. So it covers a wide range of aspects in terms of the access. So from my educator point of view, what I'm concerned about is that how we have moved from sandang pangan papan into sandang pangan colokan, right? So, I mean, yeah, for the other delegates who don't understand sandang pangan colokan, maybe you can talk about that with delegates from Indonesia, and they will explain it to you. It means that we used to have the primary needs of food, clothes, and housing. Now it becomes food, clothes, and electric charger. But we need to have one more, which is pikiran, right? So that should be the primary one. What I'm saying here is that the progress of technology, it doubles every eighteen months, and I think you know this, Professor Michio Kaku, the professor of particle physics from City University of New York said that, it doubles every eighteen months. But do our capacity of thinking, do our brains move as fast as how technology move? So that's what I would like to open this with. So I'm, I'm so concerned about misinformation. I'm so concerned about the possibility of human being hacked by the marriage between the digital transformation and about technological disruption. And, yep, education also is not selling. So if we want to educate the people of Lombok, the people of Indonesia about digital transformation, we should present both the pros and cons, and educate in a way that we want them to have the best benefits, not just selling the nirvana, the heavenly view of technology, without presenting also the risk. So that's to open it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I think what you said is true. We need to be realistic with all the challenges that are presented in front of us, and by acknowledging these challenges, then we could, you know, better prepare and ensure that we could harness all the benefits. And let's turn to Lalu. Mas Lalu, you've been working with Silacak for seven years, and for seven years you're working with the Ministry of Health, and then with Silacak, we've known that it's pretty critical for the COVID-19 tracing. So tell us about that experience and how would you respond to Marcel's presentation?
Okay, thank you, and selamat siang. Okay. Now I will be sharing like the, my experience working with digital transformation, start for, I think it's seven, eight years. I will be talking about the four points. For, the first is, what's our problem? Second, our opportunity, and what we can get for the problem. But I think I will be speaking with Bahasa, because this is the, I hope the many young people in here will be, can get what the point I will be speaking. Okay. Saya akan coba seampaikan beberapa hal yang berdasarkan pengalaman. Kalau di digital transformasi ini menjadi salah satu bagian yang penting untuk beberapa kementerian ya, termasuk di Kementerian Kesehatan yang saya sekarang bekerja bukan hanya Silacak ya, kalau pakai Peduli Lindungi juga sama, dan dikerjakan oleh asli anak NTB. Jadi, the last two, in starting at twenty twenty-one in December, Peduli Lindungi start our young people from the Lombok maintains and develop the many future from the Peduli Lindungi. And that's, sorry, the mix. Okay. Problem kita banyak. Salah satunya adalah SDM. SDM bukan hanya di Indonesia, tapi di seluruh dunia membutuhkan SDM di bidang teknologi. Nah, ini opportunity, kesempatan, karena saya juga ada kerjasama dengan salah satu distribusi SDM ke Indonesia. Mereka memberikan kesempatan untuk semua pihak bekerja di, kayak saya tiga tahun kerja di rumah, di kamar aja, tapi klien dari Jakarta, Eropa, dan sebagainya. Nah, ini kesempatan, opportunity. Kedua itu adalah awareness juga penting, karena beberapa yang kita lihat, terutama ketika saya mengerjakan sistem, ini ada kaitannya dengan cyber security ya, sistem di Kementerian Kesehatan mau data antigen PCR sangat lemah. Jadi, ini juga salah satu problem, dan kesempatan untuk anak-anak muda yang ingin coba untuk lebih memahami untuk cyber security, opportunity. Nah, apa sih yang bisa dikontribusikan juga ya? Teman-teman bisa, kita punya banyak masalah ketika berbicara digital transformasi, SDM, kemudian sistem yang masih belum terintegrasi. Kalau di Kementerian Kesehatan aja, hampir ada ribuan sistem. Nah, ini yang bagaimana teman-teman yang, anak muda yang punya pemikiran menyatukan sistemnya menjadi satu untuk mempermudah juga, karena tadi ada soal how to make decision-making with the data. That's the problem in Indonesia, because we have many resource for the data, many. You can look the different data from the other ministry, not only Ministry of Health, Ministry of Education, and other. That's, many young people can, together to solve that problem, because without the data, we can make a good decision-maker or the program, something like that.
Right. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm just helping to translate a little bit of that message for our partners here. So mostly, Mas Lalu raises up a few points about the problems that we have. There are four essentially, problems with talents, awareness, cybersecurity, and systems that are not interoperable, systems that are still not joined up. So every ministry would usually serve their own, and it's not, like, the data is not well-integrated from one another. And I can see Pak Ahmad, you are, keep nodding your heads as we're talking about digital talents. I'm gonna come back to you, but I would like to hear from Pak Tonggam. I'd like to hear from your experience handling illegal investments. As, I think this is quite the opposite of what we are expecting from digital transformation. We want digital transformation to be more productive, rather than consumptive, but we are faced with a lot of frauds and mishandling, and how do we, what, what can we do about it? And if you could also respond to Marcel's presentation, Pak, silahkan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Please let me speak in Indonesian to respond to Pak Marcel presentation. Ada dua hal yang perlu kita soroti dalam transformasi digital seperti kata Pak Marcel tadi. Yang pertama adalah lack of regulation. Regulation selalu berada di belakang dari inovasi. Kita lihat inovasi keuangan digital saat ini sangat maju, sementara peraturannya datang belakangan, sehingga perlu ditata. Yang kedua adalah literacy, lack of literacy tadi. Jadi, kemampuan kita untuk mendidik masyarakat kita sangat penting di sini karena apa? Masyarakat ini sangat terjebak dengan banyaknya informasi yang benar-benar tidak disaring di teknologi digital. Kita lihat contohnya ya, pengguna internet Indonesia itu mencapai dua ratus empat juta orang dari dua ratus dua puluh tujuh juta penduduk mencapai tujuh puluh tiga juta. Ini yang kita literasikan, tingkatkan literasi digitalnya tentunya. Dari dua permasalahan ini muncul penawaran-penawaran investasi legal yang memang tidak terregulasi, dan rendahnya pengertuan masyarakat terhadap investasi legali, sehingga terjebak. Oleh karena itu kita lihat contohnya sekarang ya, maraknya robot trading, binary option, kemudian juga crypto, yang cenderung merupakan manig kemudian juga crypto yang cenderung merupakan manigem, skema fonci yang menguntungkan mereka sendiri. Jadi teknologi keuangan digital saat ini memang kita harus laraskan dengan mengatur secara regulasi dan meningkatkan pengaturan masyarakat sendiri sehingga kita tidak terjebak dengan teknologi digital ini. Di satu sisi perkembangan digital ini sangat penting, di sisi lain ada upaya-upaya orang tidak bertanggung jawab untuk menipu kita.
Wonderful. Yes, and it makes a lot of sense, Pak. And again, for our colleagues here, just to translate that a little bit. So lack of regulation, it's definitely the one that prevents us from building that ecosystem. We don't have enough regulation to ensure that the processes are handled well. And then poor literacy that is faced against flooding of information. And a lot of them are, you know, leading towards a lot of investments that are attractive for young people because it seems to us that it leads to, you know, a faster route to gain something, but apparently it's not verified. So like having higher level of literacy would definitely help to, you know, filter this information that are flooding across different digital platforms. So these are very interesting discussion and I understand that our time are also running, but I still wanna hear from, just a little bit from each of our responder here. How do you think youth can be involved? And if you can tell us a little bit, when we talked about digital transformation, it's a part of it would usually be quite imaginative because the things that we experience right now are the things that, you know, our predecessors cannot think of in the past, but we do live in such a way that are completely different from the past. And moving forward, I think we need to enable this kind of thoughts as well. So how do you foresee the future with the current digital transformation trends? And what can young people do to mitigate the risk but as well as harness the benefits and opportunities? I'd like to maybe come back again to you, Pak Ahmad Junaid, and if you can respond a little bit with the talent issues because we have such a huge mismatch between supply and demand. On top of that question, could you tell us a little bit? How can we narrow that gap between the talent demand from the industry and the fact that our education system might not be able to catch up with that?
Right. I would like to bring the data from the ministry that we have 10,000 informatics teacher at school. And this is the data from two years ago, but I don't think the number will go far from that. But only 1,000 who has the background in informatics, so that's sad. And this is not me saying that, this is the information from the Minister of Education himself. So that's the first challenge. But how do we do, how do we make use of it? How do we handle the situation? It has to start at school and also it has to start as a collaborative work. We have to fix our ways of communicating about fintech, for example. I watch a lot of webinars on fintech because I also trade myself. I learned cryptocurrency and my teacher is actually an 18-year-old student. So yeah, I'm doing this collaboration with him and he teaches me a lot about cryptocurrency. That's what I mean by collaboration in education. I watch the webinars and they use these terminologies that are not understood by the youth. They talk about obligation, they talk about stock without giving examples, without giving analogy on how it works. So I think we have to fix that. We have to fix that first. We have to fix the way we communicate that. That's from the side of literacy. Based on our PISA score, it is so sad, only three out of 10, 15-year-old Indonesians who can read the graph, who can explain how rainbow occurs. But this is not just about that. So what I'm saying here is that it is true that our PISA is low, but when we see the students who have economic challenge, the poor students, I would say the poor students of Indonesia, they have higher score than the average of poor students from other countries. So what we see here is resilience. Jadi anak miskin di Indonesia itu lebih pintar daripada anak miskin di negara lain, yeah? So it is so resilient. So that's the first. What I want to see in the future is that I want to see the youth of Indonesia, especially here, the youth of West Nusa Tenggara. If you can initiate something that is challenging your thinking but also helping society. An example here, the youth in Australia, they go to the farms. They go look for ugly vegetables and fruits because here ugly vegetables and fruits, they don't make it to the big market. But they create a platform where they can help the farmers improve their income by selling ugly vegetables and fruits. Now, can you guys help the farmers in central Lombok, in East Lombok to sell their products in the platform of fintech that you're going to develop in the future? And another one is about the talk on the loss of jobs. We will see this, okay? There will be millions and millions of jobs that will be gone because of this. And now I want to put a phrase in your head, maybe I'm talking specifically to the youth, that the phrase universal basic income will be very popular in the future because to compensate for the loss of jobs, we have to think about a regulation that protects people who will lose the jobs. And I've got the books here and also here as well. So I've got two books here talking about digital surveillance from Sosana Zubok and also about 21 lessons for the 21st century. They talk about universal basic income. They talk about how we can mitigate the impact of technology that has the possibility of elevating some jobs. But again, I'm not overly pessimistic. I just want to present the whole picture of the digital transformation and what I hope in the future is that we can be the leader of digital transformation, not in just Southeast Asia but also in Asia and the world.
Right. Thank you so much for that. I think I would like to underline the word resilience that you said and in the post-pandemic context, I think that's exactly what we need. And I think every youth across G20 countries would have to benefit from, you know, digital transformation as well and use it for a lot of problem-solving innovation that we definitely need facing new normal. I'd like to come back to you, Pak Tonggam. You mentioned before about a little bit of regulatory support and that you said usually regulation play catch-up with innovation. Innovation would definitely happen first and then regulation would try to, you know, come after and that creates a lot of confusion in the field. So what do you think youth can do in order to ensure that we have enough regulatory support to build just what Marcel said as well, to build the ecosystem enough for us to benefit from this digital transformation, Pak?
Oke, thank you. Speak in Indonesian also.
Yes.
Bagi generasi muda seperti tadi, regulasi ini memang akan tetap tertinggal dari inovasi. Inovasi-inovasi keuangan digital sangat ini sangat banyak tentunya. Generasi milenial menemukan banyak sekali inovasi-inovasi yang membuat transaksi keuangan itu menjadi efektif dan efisien. Oleh karena itu ini tetap kita data, kita tata. Jadi tidak akan ada suatu kegiatan-kegiatan yang berada di luar ekosistem tentunya. Saat ini kalau pemuda-pemuda menemukan suatu inovasi keuangan digital, wajib melakukan pendaftaran di regulatory sandbox tentu, regulatory sandbox yang ada di OJK. Jadi inovasi ini akan digiring masuk ke suatu pembinaan untuk menguji apakah bermanfaat bagi masyarakat, mengembangkan ekonomi, melindungi masyarakat sehingga pada saatnya apabila itu merupakan industri yang harus dibangun, kita akan membangun regulasi. Jadi semua inovasi-inovasi keuangan yang belum ada regulasi digiring di regulatory sandbox.
Wonderful. And this is something that Indonesia has also tried and be an example in terms of, you know, having regulatory sandbox before ensuring that that regulation comes into place. So I'd like to give, I understand that I got cues from the organizing committee that we're running out of time, but please let's listen from Mas Lalu as well, from your experience because I think you're also representing the youth yourself. And looking at a lot of young people here, what do you think we can do collectively to ensure that we can benefit from digital transformation?
Okay, for best my experience for young people, now many opportunity. Yeah, we look at the COVID and many ministry, like the Minister of Health and other institution want to change their system to digital. That will be opportunity for young people, not only working alone with the, yeah, from like the West Lombok or, but now you can make many innovation working with the other provincial, other district or other country, make innovation to solve many problem in the world. Like we say like the claim, we say like the distribution, like the distribution or like the clean, like the problem now the COVID, the COVID. Like what young people from West Nusa Tenggara doing now, help Ministry of Health for improve the system, like Peduli Lindungi, we know the many problem in the system and for the tracking of it. And yeah, the young people have many opportunity now because digital transformation make more opportunity for you working together, make many innovation, something like that.
Wonderful, wonderful. If we can have just final three minutes, I'd like to give one minute each for each of our responder here just to, you know, let us know of your closing statement. If you can start from Palangga and then to Lalu and then, yeah, please, Pak.
Okay, thank you. Pada pemuda, kami ingin mengingatkan adanya peningkatan awareness sebenarnya, awareness. Semua inovasi-inovasi itu ada positif dan ada negatifnya sehingga awareness kita kita tingkatkan untuk melihat yang positifnya. Jangan terjebak kepada kegiatan-kegiatan yang ilegal.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Silahkan, Mas Lalu.
Thank you. For the young people, I just sort, sorta. Don't afraid for your field, fail because when you fail, you will be learn more. Just do, just do innovation and do again and do again. And because when you fail, you can get many, many information for you improve yourself. That's.
Wonderful. And please, Pak Ahmad, your closing statement.
I would like to bring an alaka's sentence on the purpose of education. The purpose of education is to sharpen our mind, strengthen our will, and soften our heart. It means digital transformation should not only empower the youth but also to help all people in all walks of life. And if you are not a part of the solution, you are the problem. Thank you.
Right. Let's give a round of applause to our three responders this afternoon. I think we've taken a lot of key takeaways. We've heard that access to digital is part of human rights, so it's not, it's no longer a privilege. And we need to ensure working together that everyone could enjoy the dividend of digital transformation. We've also heard that regulation is critical and that it's needed to build sound ecosystem for digital transformation to be facilitated and to happen in a much faster ways but also respecting all the and mitigating all the risks that come with it as well. And we've also heard from Lalu's experience that young people can be the driver of these changes. And we've seen many, many example where it is the young people who create this problem solving, you know, fashion. And we've actually benefited from a lot of it and most definitely we want to hear more of this. And hopefully a lot of these good news also come from all of you guys who are joining us and listening to this panel. So thank you very much for joining us and for you. And I would like to let you guys return to your seat. Thank you once again. If you can give a round of applause to all of our panelists. And we would still have another session, but we'll let you have a break time for about 20 minutes. We would expect you to return before 3:50 PM. So you'll have around 15 to 20 minutes to have your prayers time. For those who are not fasting, we also provide meals outside. You can bring it inside but just maybe in a respectful manner for our colleagues who are fasting today. But with that, thank you so much for your attention and I'll see you again in the after the session after the break. Thank you. Goodbye. See you again.
Cek satu dua.
Halo Angelo.
Yang pandai. Angelo.
Pegang matanya rasanya.
Next one is your session.
Yes.
Halo, selamat siang semua. Untuk yang masih di luar, kami harapkan untuk bisa masuk kembali karena kita akan memulai sesi focus group discussion. Selamat siang semua. Kami berharap peserta Town Hall Meeting bisa kembali ke mejanya masing-masing karena focus group discussion akan segera dimulai. Terima kasih. Oke, kita akan kembali lagi. Halo, selamat siang semua. Kayaknya suaranya kalau biasanya anak muda kan lebih semangat ya. Selamat, selamat siang semua. Nah, kalau kayak gitu sebagai lebih cair, jadi lebih semangat, kita juga lebih semangat diskusinya. Grup satu sepertinya sudah lengkap, grup dua juga ada beberapa yang belum. Semoga kita sambil menunggu teman-teman yang lain, bisa kita sambil mulai. Sekali lagi, sebelum kita mulai, selamat siang semua. Padahal sebenarnya udah sore tapi semangatnya harus masih kayak siang-siang ya. Atau harusnya selamat pagi, kalian selamat pagi. Wah, suaranya semakin lebihnya, semakin lebih semangat lagi. Oke, welcome back to the Town Hall Meeting Y20 Indonesia 2022 Second Pre-Summit Digital Transformation. My name is Desi. I'm the Digital Transformation Track Suter Chair and I will be leading the focus group discussion today. So in the previous session, we have listened to the great discussion which set the scene on how local youth could play the role in digital transformation, both in the digital governance as well as the digital financial one. So in this session, I would like to invite all of you, the Town Hall participants, youth from the West Nusa Tenggara and other provinces representing the central Indonesia to share your ideas as well as discuss in small groups on two issues. The first one is regarding the role of youth in digital governance and then the second one on digital financial awareness. We would like to hear about the opportunities and then the challenges of Indonesian youth in digital transformation and your ideas on policy proposals to address these issues. As Biondi has shared in the beginning of the Town Hall, all of your ideas are extremely valuable to contribute to the Y20 Summit discussions. I believe that the committee has already divided all the groups into ten where each of the groups has their own facilitators from local chapters, IYD who will help facilitating the discussion. To all the facilitators, I would like to invite you to join your respective groups, please. Please give a round of applause to all the facilitators. And then we will have twenty minutes for each group to discuss and then after that, we will kindly ask each group to present to the forum. Each group has three minutes to present to the forum and then after the FGD, I will also invite the delegates and observers for the Y20 Indonesia Summit to provide your response and comments to the ideas from the local youth. Okay, without further ado, we will start the group discussion. During the discussion, I will also go around if you have any questions or if you have any feedback or any concerns. I would like to also welcome and invite all delegates, all observers as well as our S team guests from the embassies to also go around the table to listen to any concerns or proposals from the local youth. I wish you a lively and productive discussion. Selamat berdiskusi. Kita punya 20 menit untuk berdiskusi. I wish you a lively and productive discussion. Selamat berdiskusi. Kita punya 20 menit untuk berdiskusi. Our S team guests, I would like to again remind you that you can join one of the table of the round table discussions to listen to all the youth's ideas and discussion. Thank you. Untuk semua peserta, di masing-masing round table sudah disediakan flip chart. Silahkan untuk digunakan apabila ada beberapa hal yang ingin disampaikan terkait dengan policy proposalsnya. To all the participants, please be reminded, we still have three minutes to wrap up the discussions and please be ready with your policy proposals. Thank you. Untuk semua peserta, kita masih punya tiga menit ya untuk wrap up diskusinya. Sebelum akhirnya nanti masing-masing dari group bisa mempresentasikan seperti apa policy proposalsnya. Terima kasih. Oke, the time is up. Thank you everyone for discussing. I would like to ask you to remain to your seat and then we will start hearing a lot of good ideas from each of the groups. Thank you everyone for the discussion. I went around the round table and it seems like everyone gives a really great ideas and then policy proposals that we would like to hear in just a moment. Oke, thank you again everyone. I heard a lot of good ideas to start with. I will start with the group number one. Oh, let's give a round of applause for the discussion. Semuanya tadi terlihat sangat semangat, semuanya terlihat sangat aktif. I heard a lot of good ideas. So let's start with the group number one. Who will be representing group number one? Oke, please tell us about the group discussions and then the result and the policy proposals. You have three minutes to share the group. Thank you.
So, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My name is Rizna Dewi, but you can call me TV. I'm representative from first group and I'm from Chile, one of the poor village in center Lombok or West Nusa Tenggara. So, it's something like, I will bring this issue. So here we have two term. The first is, we will... The first is, we will discuss about the role of youth in digital literacy and digital safety. So here, I know that everyone still receive the message from Pingjol, right? You still receive the message from Pinjaman online, everyone here. So where they get our number? So it's mean about digital safety. Our digital safety in Indonesia is not good enough, that's the question. And here, everyone actually has familiar about digital, right? Everyone use the social media, everyone buy from the shopee and everything. But the problem here, our, from the data, digital literacy in Indonesia all talk increase, that is 3.49, but the problem here is digital safety still below score in Indonesia, that is 3.10. So here, we are here as the youth. We would like to give solution from the top up to the bottom. From the bottom, the solution here, we would like to invite every NGO, we would like to invite every community that is focus on how to educate society to increase the digital literacy. That's from the bottom, but for the relegation, sorry. Because we still need the relegation, we still need the government. We cannot make movement without the government. So what is our solution? The first is, we want to force the, we want for the digital safety, we want to force the government to approve the rancangan undang-undang perlindungan data pribadi. Because now you know, the drop still from 2016 until now, the government still not approve this constitution. So what is the question, what is the problem? Because you know, the problem of digital safety or cyber scam is one of the highest crime in Indonesia. Peduli lindungi, how to say, pembocoran data, that's one of the problem. But we want as the youth, we want to force the government to approve the rancangan undang-undang perlindungan data pribadi. The second one is, how to increase the literacy, how to increase the knowledge of digital literacy? We want to force the government, Ministry of Education, that is to make curriculum in digital education.
Okay, thank you so much. Group one, thank you. Give a round of applause to group one. We heard a great ideas, how the solution starting from the GDPR regulation as well as talking about the curriculum that is important to address the literacy. Thank you group one. Again, round of applause for group one. Now I'll go to the second group who will be representing. You have 3 minutes to also share about the group's policy solutions.
Alright, thank you ladies and gentlemen, honorable guests. Ultimately, the digital world is a space in which individuals will always be the ones who are the most vulnerable. With us entering web 3, we now have the opportunity to reinvent the wheel, so to speak. To truly transform our cybersecurity capabilities and our digital financial governance and unlock the full potential of blockchain technology of having a bigger role in all of this. However, this brings us to some of our greatest concerns. Firstly is the decentralization and democratization of the age of information. Right now, we are completely reliant and dependent on big tech companies to provide us with our digital service and sphere and we are vulnerable to these companies which have control over our accessibility to these services, our private data and information, our browsing pattern and online activities. Furthermore, this has many implications to the future global economy, which is the digital economy. Cryptocurrencies and NFTs have become popular in recent years and volume in trading of these commodities have skyrocketed. However, however, if we wish to transform our digital tech and financial sphere, we must, it is not important, it is not enough to simply develop more infrastructure and embrace this opportunity. We have to evolve our energy mix. We have to transform how we live our physical life, not just our digital life. We can consciously move towards not just a better digital future, but a greener physical future. And so this is our three main points. First is cybersecurity capabilities for protecting individual data privacy, net neutrality and consumer protection and the security of human lives. Second is strong regulations of digital financing and the age of information so that all people can access these resources and experience upwards economic mobility and further education for digital and financial literacy. And finally, we need to ensure that before we transform our digital world, we transform our physical one. In particular, we must ensure our energy mix accounts for factors of externalities like the environment and climate change and reach our targets of the Paris Agreement of 1.5 degrees Celsius and further go beyond it to reach Indonesia's net zero emission targets. The digital world mustn't be on track to completely destroy our physical one and not accounting for factors of externality is a dangerous way to progress forward. Thank you.
Wow, what a great proposals from group two. Thank you so much. I highlighted different, so many great important points related to cybersecurity, regulation on digital finance and transform the physical environment which is more to the greener one and talking about the externalities of the environment. So give another round of applause of the group two policy proposals. Thank you. Now move on to the third group. I would like to invite one of the group to also share the result. So you have 3 minutes to share with us. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Good afternoon ladies and gentlemen. I am Diva and I represent the term 3 and we got the time about the youth roles in digital governance. The issues that we want to talk is about digital literacy and skill and connectivity issues in remote areas of west Nusa Tenggara. Such as Sekotong in west Lombok, Sambelie, Jerowaro in S Lombok and Gumantar in north Lombok. The area still needs help in terms to internet coverage. For example, in school they don't understand and know informations about COVID-19, about having to learn from home and how dangerous it is. And the teacher should teach offline due to their limited connection and communication tools. The challenge, we as the young generation should be aware of this issue because it is very important. If we want the society, especially the youth, to pay attention to these digital transformations, we have to let them know what is digital mindset is. With that, they can use social media for good thing and use technology as it should. And our recommendation for the government is to develop the infrastructure such as infinite invite investor to invest to accelerate digitalizations. And the second, the opportunity that we can take is to collaborate with relevant organizations. We could collaborate with the organization in the society such as giving them skills to have a digital mindset first. Because most people think that digital transformations may, they think about digitalization process. Meanwhile, the fact digitalization is one small component of that. And the last but not least, Desa Digital, which means having digital mindset and apply to their daily activities such as their financial community empowerment based on the use of informatical technology. These programs aim to develop village potential, marketing and accelerating access and public services. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much group 3. Also excellent points pointed out by group 3. I highlighted develop infrastructure, collaboration with the local organizations to also increase the digital literacy and mindset and also last not by least about the Desa Digital to also increase the inclusivity of this digital transformation. Give another round of applause for group 3. Thank you so much for the results of the policy proposals. Now I would like to move to group 4. You have 3 minutes like the other group to also share the policy proposals.
Bismillah, rohmanirrohim, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My name is Ricky. I'm from Islambock. Good afternoon everyone. Thank you for the time. Let me explain in Indonesian please. Berbicara dengan, berbicara digital financial atau literasi digital financial sebenarnya ini menjadi permasalahan yang tidak hanya dialami oleh NTB tapi hampir seluruh masyarakat di Indonesia. Kenapa kami berani berkata seperti itu? Karena banyak sekali daerah-daerah yang, kalau tadi dari kelompok 3 mengatakan banyak daerah yang masih dalam 3T yang belum mendapatkan akses yang baik untuk memperoleh informasi maka kendala kita di digital financial literacy ini adalah tidak hanya kesadaran. Kesadaran literasi financial kita ini meningkat sebenarnya. Sesuai dari survei OJK SNKI 2019 itu terjadi peningkatan terkait digital financial literacy yang inklusi. Namun ada, mohon maaf. Adapun beberapa kendala adalah peningkatan kesadaran ini tidak dibaringi dengan aksi, aksi yang baik. Dalam arti apa? Oke, kita sadar tapi kita tidak mengambil langkah. Kita tahu ada yang kurang tapi kita tidak mencoba untuk memperbaiki sesuatu yang kurang tersebut. Dengan cara apa? Melakukan pelatihan dan lain sebagainya. Sehingga, apa yang bisa dilakukan oleh pemuda di sini adalah membentuk sebuah komunitas. Bukan hanya komunitas dalam kelompok kecil tapi dari komunitas ini nanti akan menjadi sebuah pilot project yang harus didukung oleh pemerintah untuk pemerintah harus mendukung sebuah pilot project untuk mengenalkan financial literacy untuk mengembangkan segala potensi yang ada di masyarakat dan lingkungannya. Oke, kemudian hasil dari pilot project ini akan dibawakan kemana? Dari satu pilot project sebuah daerah, ini akan melakukan pengimbasan ke daerah lainnya. Jadi ada dominos efek, efek domino tidak hanya satu daerah tapi mulai, kita memulai dari satu daerah yang sukses kemudian ini akan memberikan efek domino jangka panjang. Karena kita ketahui bersama bahwa digital sendiri adalah sebuah alat atau jembatan untuk menghubungkan kita dari berbagai daerah. Menghubungkan kita dari, bisa berkomunikasi dengan orang luar tanpa batas. Jadi pemanfaatan digital dalam dunia ekonomi itu sangat membantu kita untuk membawa segala potensi kita. Mungkin akan ditambahkan.
Thank you again. Let's give a round of applause for group 4. Let me briefly just translate what the group 4 has give a really great ideas on digital financial literacy. So they highlight that the problem is not only awareness because the awareness is there about the digital financial but then the problem is actually the lack of action with the local youth as well as from the government. So what is proposed by the group 4 is actually a pilot project that needs to be supported by the government to enhance the financial literacy which is conducted by the local youth. The result from that pilot project will be rolled out to other provinces as a group practices for other provinces. And then that is expected to be kind of like a domino effect for the other provinces. So that was the highlight from the group number 4. Let's give another applause for group number 4. Thank you so much. Now let's move on to the group number 5. You have 3 minutes to share.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Azhar and we are from the fifth group. And we are talking about the role of youth in digital governance. And my group is dividing the role of youth into two different act. The first one is direct because as an individual, we are having our own expertise meaning that we can be an effective individual. And the second one is a collaborative one. But since we are talking about the role of youth, it'll be way more impactful if we are standing in a collaborative event. And in this case, we are coming with a concept called integrated volunteering. To have a better image about this concept, we are giving an example and this example is very familiar to us. We are talking about the MotoGP event held in the Mandalika. The event held in the Mandalika is often considered as an event which is only beneficial for people who lives in Lombok and those who live in Zumbawa often questioning, what are we getting? Are we forgotten as part of NTB? While actually they're not forgotten, the Mandalika is actually an opening to many opportunities. So in this case, rather than opening another tourism perspective, we are overing this integrated volunteering between us as part of youth and then the NGO who has a better system in project management and in funding and also the government as the policymakers. And the object in this case is the SMEs located in Zumbawa. We are prefer to ask SMEs to have a better packaging system, to have their local stuff being brought to the Mandalika. And with this effort, the economy in Zumbawa can also increase in the event of MotoGP. So MotoGP can be an inclusive event to people who lives in west Nusa Tenggara. We are delivering this concept to have a better Mandalika project in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the group number 5 who already shared with us about the ideas of integrated volunteering, collaboratively working with the government as well as societies to increase the economy using a digital platform. Thank you. So now we would like to move to the sixth group. You have 3 minutes to share with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bismillah, rohmanirrohim, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. We are from the sixth group. We want to strike to point about our solution through digital transformation. The first solution is, we propose the concept of three in one concept. What is it? It is three village for one BTS. This is what the theme of our digital transformation about accessibility or connectivity and infrastructure in Indonesia. Based on our fact, we found that we have 17,000 BTS already in Indonesia and we just missed 30,000 BTS. And this was quite problem to the diversity and accessibility of connectivity in Indonesia. And the second solution is about how we strike digital literacy skill and digital government, digital identification. We propose the solution, the employee monthly fee pay with finance-based technology. So I think it will be correlate with how we automatically escalating the quality of digital literacy of our society by paying them, they as an employee by paying them with digital fintech. It will be ultimately, will escalate them to digital transforming from the previous way. And the next way, and the next solution is escalating the use of QRS in our nation as central bank digital currencies. I think this is what we should consider also. We have in Indonesia QRS as our base on digital currencies and if we can escalate it, it will be automatically will transform our society to digitalization. And the last, how we can innovate the business model and the role of teacher and youth. This basically to answer the problem how digital finance payment, financial literacy and data privacy must be answered by innovate how the business model going on. We know that it need disrupting model for us to escalate from digital business model and it will be correlate how the young people, how our society transform the business model into digital concept like marketplace, e-commerce, financial technology and so on. I think that's all from us. Thank you for your attention. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you for group 6. There are couple of interesting ideas starting from the three in one concept for the three village for one BTS and then they enhance the digital literacy also escalating the use of QRIS. I think that's also highlighted by the other about inclusivity, how to as much as possible include other people in the marginalized area and then increasing the role of teacher for the financial literacy as well as changing the mindset about the business model. So give another applause for group 6. Thank you for the ideas. Now we move to the seventh group. So the group has another 3 minutes like the other to present your ideas.
Okay, remember the only lady that represent the first group, that's my triplet. One, okay, thank you. Okay, there are three point that we propose in our seventh group. The first one is provide the ecosystem development should embrace the inclusivity and security. Especially for fertile groups, yang, aku campur aja ya bahasa Indonesia bahasa Inggris. Di mana kita memang mau building ecosystem digital transformasi but should embrace inclusivity. Terutama kaum fertile groups, perempuan-perempuan, anak-anak yang sering jadi sasaran digital crimes dan juga indigenous. dan juga indigenous people. Nah, balik ke point kedua yaitu building awareness. We should build on the awareness but we have to fix the way we communicate. Karena kita kaum privilets, kita semua kaum privilets di mana kita mengerti banyak terms. But the problem when we want to build the awareness, we sometimes or we often use very difficult term yang di mana susah di digest. It's very difficult for the audience to digest especially for the local or indigenous people. Jadi untuk building awareness should embrace the indigenous people as well. Kayak kalau memang mau building awareness kalau pakai bahasa Sasak, pakai bahasa Sasak, pakai bahasa lokal. So nah, jadi pemerataannya akan lebih tersampaikan, pesan yang disampaikan. Lalu yang ketiga, lalu ya, point selanjutnya. Fasten the approval of RUU pelindungan data. Karena RUU PKS, we wait for years untuk approval RUU PKS. RUU pelindungan data harus segera dilegalisasi. Selain itu perlu ada lembaga khusus, denkah itu di bawah Komentek Informasi atau di bawah Presiden yang khusus ini menjalankan regulasi RUU pelindungan data ini. Itu saja dari kami. Terima kasih.
So much for the 7th Group. I'll try to translate a bit. So the first is regarding the ecosystem itself for the digital transformation is important. And in regards to that ecosystem, it is important to be inclusive. So that's why they propose to include women and indigenous people. And when we are talking about the awareness and when we are talking about building awareness for that digital information transformation, I mean, try to as much as possible localize in that context. For example, you can using a local language as well as focusing on how to address to the problems that they face. And then the last but not least is actually regarding to the data protection regulation. I think it's also mentioned by the other Group. How to push the government to also release this regulation and also proposing for a new agency under precedence, for example, to also carrying out this task on protecting the data for the citizens. So thank you Group number 7. Another applause for Group number 7. Now we move to the 8th Group. You have 3 minutes to share your policy proposals. Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, let me try to present in English. Even my English not so very well, but I'm trying. Well, ladies and gentlemen, our topic is about vintage finance technology. In our understanding vintage, there are 3 aspects, 3 points that have to known by us. Vintage is the innovation, one of the innovations for the technology. And also vintage is at the finance services. So that's why vintage comes up because of technology and the lifestyle. Ladies and gentlemen, vintage right now is a life of style for the all human around the world right now. But there is one problem, big problem that we found that is about human itself. Not because of the vintage itself comes, but it is about the humans. This is, there are 3 problems that we try to analyze deeply. The first is human knowledge, the second one is human skills, and the third one, human attitude. How to solve this problem? The first, to solve their knowledge, we try to keep socialized about the vintage itself. I mean, the benefit of vintage and then how the vintage role in our life. The second one is about skill, how to improve it, how to resolve the problem about the skills. The first is about training and learning. The governments or the expert try to make the agenda to give training or learning for the society who hasn't known about the vintage itself. And about, the third one is about the attitude. We never know so why cyber comes and then why we need protection our data because there is no knowledge from the school that we try to know. So that's why to improve or to help the ethics for the peoples, for the students or for the youth. So we try to expand the national curricula for the junior high school to teaching in digital era, in digitalizations. Because we try to understand only teaching like conventional teaching. But right now, we couldn't hinder us that we need digital. We live in digital era. We live in super smart era. Well, ladies and gentlemen, so that's why our big solutions that is collaborations and consultations. The collaborations is there are 5 elements, 5 elements who will be involved in collaborations. The first one is the government itself because this is one of the make policymakers for make regulatory for the educations, for the health, for the finance or digital economy etc. So this is the route to make the good or the best regulations. The second one is about the private. The second one is the private because they make the software, they make many, many they try to provide applications etc. So that's why we have to collaborate with them.
Apologies, your time is up. But thank you for the proposals from the sorry, Group number 8. So thank you for the proposals we highlight about how to improve human knowledge, skills and ethics. So those 3 come up with the collaborative solution where you need to include all the government, private, society as well as media and others to also collaborate to improve this digital transformation. Thank you Group 8. Again, another applause for Group 8. We now move to Group 9. So the 9th Group, you have 3 minutes to share your policy proposals.
Oke, thank you. I'm Adi from Group 9. So in general, we understand that tourism is the main sector for income and economy of Vesun-Satanggara which accounts more than 60% of our GDP. And one of the source of the livelihood for people in tourism is from kafaman ship. And the problem is during this COVID-19, the economy, the company of the livelihood from the kafaman ships becomes lower due to low visits from the tourists. The selling are conducted mostly offline. And one of the instance is in Batujai. Batujai is one of the area in Lombok. The local business becomes facing problems with the number of low selling of their products in these recent years. And we provide solution first by the government are to engage with the local youth who are capable regarding digital education to provide training and knowledge regarding digital marketing, access to online banking, which provides multiplier effect. We are encourage the Department of Industry and Trade and Department of Commerce for integration and collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you Group 9 for the excellent ideas. I also noted various points regarding how to engage to people who are also can give a training on digital marketing. I think this group is also highlighting one of the sector that can be also become a pilot project for the community, for example tourism. I think the other one is also highlighting the same. So thank you again for Group number 9 for the proposals. Another applause. Last but not least, the 10th Group. You have 3 minutes to share.
So thank you. We are from Group 10. So we believe that the COVID-19 pandemic has caused a lot of immense pressure and immense pressure to our financial condition and our financial climate. But however, people have to make do. They have to make the payments. They have to pay their rent. They have to buy for their foods. So this condition is exacerbated by our financial literacy or lack thereof. We rank the lowest among the OECD countries with score of 3.7 below the average of 4.6. So in January alone, this is just for our colleagues who do not know the who do not have the complete understanding in our financial condition in Indonesia. In January alone, there are 30,000 people borrowing from online loan sharks. However, only 5% of those online loan sharks are listed in the financial service authorities. So you can imagine those 95% online loan sharks are fraudulent or illegal. So they can do whatever they want. They're above the law basically. So yeah, with the totaling transaction of $218 million. So you can imagine how big the number is. So we believe, so our proposal is we believe in collaborative effort. We highly regard collaborative effort. First, our proposal is to urge the government to pass the Personal Data Protection Bill. But however, we also would like the government to make a certain change, incremental change actually. We want the government to create a Personal Data Protection Commission and independent one which is lacking from the original bill. The second one is that we as the young people should involve and we should be the one who orchestrate the financial digital literacy. We believe that it should be at the community level. We should, we believe that it should be, we believe that people should be at the center of the program. So we believe in listening to their plea, to their listening to them internally. We believe that in using and communicating with them in a language that they understand and etc. And first of all, probably is that it should be locally relevant to the community. And the third one is that we urge the government to include digital financial literacy in digital literacy curriculum because we know that, we are aware that digital literacy is going to be involved in the curriculum. So thank you.
Thank you so much Group number 10. So you highlighted about the collaborative efforts, also urge the government to pass the Personal Data Protection Bill. Another incremental change that needs to be done by the government also emphasizing on the people like the other group also emphasizing how we can be more human-centered in terms of making the policy and then making another implementation of the program. Also making it inclusive and locally relevant and also increasing the digital financial literacy and by integrating that in the curriculum. I ask everyone to give another round of applause for all the local youth. What a great discussion. Today we hear a lot about the great ideas and then the great proposals on the youth's role both in digital governance and then digital financial literacy. I would like to thank all the participants and all the facilitators for the discussion. In responding to these great ideas, I would like to welcome all the delegates, observers and also esteemed guests from the embassies to give and provide their comments and feedbacks and responses to all these great ideas. The first thing I would like to invite Marcel Satria as the Indonesian Delegates for the Y2022 Summit to also give their response. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, amazing guys. I've been walking around and I was listening to each and every one of your discussions and I'm just so excited because the first step in any of these programs is the fact that you're discussing it. Because what I've noticed from all the feedback from each of the groups, there's one common thing that everyone's talking about. Community-based projects, localized-based projects. That's the best way for local communities to take charge and to make sure that these policies are implemented for the local communities you care about. And that's inspiring and I think that's definitely something that we will definitely bring forward to the Y20 Summit. We want to prioritize the government to think more, you know, from a grassroots kind of movement. And I also think that the fact that all of you are discussing it gives me a lot of hope for NTB because I know you all will be the future leaders of NTB and you will be driving this. So I'm really, really looking forward to seeing how that goes in the future. So I'm note one thing, so the community-based is definitely something that I've noted as a common theme. The second thing that I've noted is of course the urgency that some groups have mentioned about the Personal or Data Privacy Bill. And I think I completely agree with that. That's something that we want to really push forward at a national level. And also the note about having an independent agency for the enforcement of that data privacy bill. Because at the end of the day, even if we make it a real law and we legislate it, enforcement is important as well. So I think that's a really good point. And then the other thing that I've also noted is how there's a lot of consciousness of the vulnerable communities or the vulnerable people. We have to continuously remember that in all our policies, right? Women, children, indigenous people as well as SMEs, small, medium enterprises, training them. And again, this goes back to why we have a community-based approach in our policies. So again, I see that as a common theme from every single one of you and each group. Very inspiring. Thank you so much. Really looking forward to bringing this up in the Y20.
Thank you Marcel. I would like to also welcome if there are any other comments from the delegates, observers or representatives from the embassies. Anyone?
Hallo semua. Saya Emily dari Kerute, Amerika Serikat. Terima kasih sekali atas semua ide-ide yang luar biasa dan semua dan banyak kerja yang saya bisa lihat sudah dilakukan untuk menyiapkan semua ide ini. Thank you so much for the amazing ideas. We should all be paying attention because you are the future of Indonesia, of the world and digital transformation is also the future. I want to thank everyone so much for particularly bringing out the theme of diversity, inclusion and the importance of making sure that groups are not marginalized. Semua orang bisa mendapatkan informasi yang bagus dari digital transformation. Dan semua orang harus punya kesempatan untuk mengakses informasi ini. Then this brings me to the second point that I really thought was important was infrastructure. Infrastructure adalah sesuatu yang mendukung access untuk semua. Tanpa infrastruktur di Indonesia dan di seluruh dunia tidak bisa mendapatkan semua kesempatan, all of the good opportunities that the digital transformation provides. Tapi yang paling penting pendidikan dan digital literacy. Karena kalau kami punya kesempatan dan mengakseskan dan bisa access semua program atau sistem fintech misalnya tanpa pendidikan atau tanpa mengerti apa yang ada dalam sistem itu, itu bisa juga menjadi sesuatu yang berbahaya. Ya? Ada disinformation di seluruh dunia. Ada financial loan sharks yang tadi dijelaskan. Jadi semua orang juga harus mendapatkan informasi dan pendidikan. Itu salah satu sesuatu yang kami dari Kerute, Amerika Serikat mau mendukung di Indonesia. Kalau ada kesempatan untuk pendidikan, punya program untuk pendidikan digital khusus untuk digital. Kalau mau dapat lebih banyak informasi juga bisa langsung lihat website kami untuk melihat ada program khusus juga untuk orang dari Lombok. Jadi saya senang sekali bisa diberi hadiah di Lombok hari ini dengan semua. Terima kasih atas kesempatan berbicara dengan semua dan saya berharap semua delegate yang ada di sini semua orang yang merepresentasi pulau Lombok bisa juga mendapatkan informasi mengenai pendidikan atau pertukaran di Amerika Serikat karena Indonesia dan Amerika harus berkjerja bersama dalam hal ini dan banyak hal lain. Terima kasih.
Thank you so much. So I think we already concluded and there are couple of main points that already being noted by the delegates, by the observers about today's discussion. Again, thank you so much for everyone. Saya mau kita semua tepuk tangan untuk semua youth yang sudah sangat semangat, yang sudah banyak memberikan idenya. Semoga ini bisa menjadi masukan yang baik untuk para delegasi untuk nanti Y20 Summit. Jadi ide-idenya tidak akan menjadi sia-sia tapi menjadi sesuatu yang berkontribusi buat Y20 Summit kedepan. So I hope today's discussion really also responded to your interest and then your expectations that it has been also insightful as it for me as well. I'm sure all the ideas as I said earlier already being noted by the delegates and the other observers for the Y20 Summit. I would like to also highlight again before I conclude the events that this town hall meeting is part of the Y20 sub-agenda's second pre-summit, Digital Transformation. This is sponsored by Pluang, Goto, BCA, Tanato Foundation, LGN, PT Aman, Mineral Nusantara. Once again, everyone, I would like to thank you all your great participation and we will see you at the opening ceremony at 6 PM. Thank you.